Okay, let's call the November fifteenth. White Lake Library Board of Trustees Meeting Together. Call the order at six forty-five. So you, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. And then. Make us the honor of the calling room.
We'll call, all right, President Jennifer Schultz.
Here.
Vice President Richard McLeod.
Here.
Treasurer Gwyneth Newton.
Here.
Secretary Jacoba.
Here.
Trustee Karen Wines.
Here.
Trustee Eric Shawwell.
Here.
And we are joined in attendance by Director April Stevenson and Assistant Director Amy.
We do not have any public, but that doesn't matter because we're putting the agenda right. Alrighty.
I move to, to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now I will answer, there's no public here for public comment. And we have no presentations tonight. So would be pleased to review the minutes from last.
I'll move to just accept the most, the minutes as presented. Shouldn't be that hard to say.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And yes, have it with five yes votes. Okay, moving on to officer reports, I'm going to let Jake go first.
Okay.
Since he has some news to share.
Thank you. Earlier today, as everybody received, I submitted my letter of resignation from the board affected November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I've accepted a promotion and will be moving out of White Lake. So residency will be changing and I will no longer be eligible to serve on the board. The last three years have been really enjoyable experience for myself. I think against board have accomplished a lot. I mean, I think our first meeting in Sweden was during COVID. It's kind of crazy to think about and then, you know, the budgets we've approved and seeing all the things go on with library. I think it's kind of fitting that the drive up window is now finished because I remember that was one of the first things we talked about as a board. Along with, you know, bringing in April has been an awesome hire. I think we can all agree on that. We've really lucked out. And, you know, looking forward to the future of the board with strategic plan and all of that. So we're looking forward to the continued growth and development of the library entity. So.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the subcommittees you've been in.
Yeah.
Contribution. It's been wonderful. We're gonna miss you a lot.
And none of them came with a submarine sandwich. It just, you know.
No. None of them. Well, I wish you the best of luck.
Right.
All of you, thank you. And, you know, I'll just add, everybody's just saying you were fun to work with and, and have really good ideas and it was nice to have someone half my age. Interesting, someone else's perspective. I really enjoyed it.
Yeah, thank you.
If you ever need a recommendation.
Yeah.
We're happy to.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Rich, did you have anything to ask?
Um, I'll echo this, the same that I go ahead and said, no, I have no report.
Okay, so that brings us to you.
What? My turn.
Your turn.
No, thing is. Um, hopefully, everybody's looked at our, um, our balance sheet today. I took a look at it and noticed something I'd never noticed before on our investments that Joe and I'll talk about it. It, it's nothing new. Um, we don't have any CDs that are coming. We have CDs that are coming due in December. However, we voted on them last month on what we were going to do for those CDs. And then the next CD that comes due, I believe, we had one in February, but maybe we actually don't until March. So, uh, no, Flagstar, right, Chase, the end of, so the end of February. So in December, we'll make a decision what we're going to do with that. Chase CD, um, and we just renewed a CD at Genesis. I think it was five point oh five oh three percent. We renewed for thirteen months. And in that one, it started at two point seven five.
Yeah.
And it, yes, and it's now, and it's now, um, so, I mean, it's pretty fabulous that now it's twice that. So that will be a good, good income from next year. And then we moved, um, a hundred and a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and two thousand dollars from Lake Michigan over to the Flagstar checking. So hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to look at the financial documentation. And one of the things that I had never noticed and I mentioned it today to April and then Joe had in, at the very last page. Um, it stated as a, um, next week. So it says, um, cash and short-term investments as of November twenty-first. This is the, actually the cash on hand as of, I believe, today. And this is in preparation for what it'll look like when we sign checks next week.
Okay.
Okay.
We should watch what happens to interest rates. Since they didn't raise them again because the inflation number is lower.
Right.
So that may affect our CD rates by the time February, March.
That's true because the, well, hopefully, we'll know what the interest rates are in December when we make that decision and what we're going to do with the Chase, um, CD. Yeah, so we have one coming due in, but the Chase one is due and we need to make a decision in December at the latest in January. Um, for that, and then we have a Flagstar one that will be the end of March. Okay, and actually, we have. Um, yeah, okay, so. So if, um, everybody has looked at the check detail in accounts payable. And there's no question. Then I will, um, I'll make a motion to accept the bills for payment as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Okay, yes.
And that includes all I have for the finance committee when we get to that.
Okay. So April.
Um, so just a short turnaround since our last board meeting, but, um, as you've noticed, we've come in, we're always going to miss on the man table. This is the Lydia Barnes Potter chapter of the DAR. Um, it's our second partnership with them and so glad to keep that partnership and we'll be doing some things with them in the future.
It's very nice. It's. It's American Revolution, right? It's, it's very nice display.
Yeah, very happy about it. And if you look over at the Cirque Desk, um, there's a picture book that is kind of talks about it in a, in the situation. So, um, it's kept over on there because it's, um, something I learned. I had, I did the missing man table previously and gee, that chapter actually allowed the book to be on the table. But I found out and that's not exactly a respectful thing to do. So we did it over to the Cirque.
No.
Um, okay.
What I really liked, I want to make one more comment about that because I thought it was beautiful. And what's nice too is there was, um, the little sheets of paper people could take home. And so I did take a couple and share with other people in the community. They're beautiful.
For us, that was very, very nice.
Nice.
Our COVID test kits that are available, uh, so far, we have given out twenty-three of those kits. That's going well. We had our in-service day, which went very well. Everyone enjoyed it. And moving on, the Board Networking Opportunities document, you're going to find that at the end of your packet. So I'm going to check that out. You have to sign up for something. Let me know when signing. It's just a couple of things going on. We were able to, not only is there shifting run on the adult nonfiction, but if you haven't been here in a little bit, um, check out the mix area. We made some really nice moves there, uh, really allows for the sunlight to come in better. It highlights the large print area. It shows off that, um, high top seating, uh, which immediately we found people just gravitating towards it.
Uh, nice.
You can also see the vending area, which is a nice thing because people kind of realize it's kind of behind the shelf.
Yeah.
And all this mention, so.
Yeah, if you didn't know.
You, you didn't know what was there.
Yeah, right, right.
Great.
So big thanks to Amy for, um, kind of designing that and working out like a Tetris that should go there. Uh, and Maria redid the, um, uh, and Cheryl worked on redesigning how the large print should go because everything has to be left to write. So it should be complicated. Um, so they got that all done. It looks great. I, I was very happy. Um, stats are looking good. We had a great, um, showing with our concert coming up on Jackie and Mary. And Tractor Connections, I've been out about attending meetings, uh, whether via Zoom or in-person coffees, chamber events. And, uh, the last Thursday and last night, I was over at Oxford Elementary for their parent teacher conferences. I hosted an informational table there. Uh, so that was nice to get out into the schools. I love going over there. Um, so it is the, um.
The question is, how did you get over there? Is the, is the road open?
It's before that. So.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not.
If you're covered from Tiger Dome.
Right.
It's moving different. You can't get to the bridge.
The boat launches, it's still.
Right, so coming from us, it's okay.
Yeah.
But I have to go back. But that's a wonderful school. Facilities, uh, our chemical treatment is looking good. We fixed two of the clocks on the soft water tanks, which when the clock, we started to have one fixed, but when the clocks are off, they were thinking it was the wrong time of day. So they were filtering during the day, which would cause the water level to go down and oh my God, we can't flush the toilets. So that's the small things. Um, we fixed a small spring leak on the threads of a quarter inch ball valve on the domestic water supply. Um, and again, uh, the township water department was out to adjust the meter. So hopefully, we're getting close to that being done. Uh, the friends are looking forward to participating in the this crime free lady, which you are also invited to attend. This is a wonderful, um, wonderful thing to go to. I was at it last year. I'll be at it this year. They have one of the ceremony and they're going to have tree ornament, craft kits for the kids. Santa's there. So it's, it's a lot of fun and it's very well attended. So many things make for light work.
There, there have been years where it has been just so cold.
I'd say even last year, I was fully geared up with the ear flap hat. So. Um, we are, I, I talked to the friends about the opportunity for teachers to have an early time to shop at the March book sale and they agreed that they're going to do that. So nice thing for them. And they have joined the chamber. So.
How are they going to monitor that?
They're going to, they're going to, teachers need to bring in their school ID.
So if you're homeschooler, a lot of homeschoolers have IDs.
I'm not sure how they're going to work through, um, I think with homeschoolers, the move was that they have the time to come.
Okay.
When the teachers don't, but that's why they.
So is this going to be an evening? Okay.
Oh, we're communicating.
We're going to put it out in, um, probably the e-news, probably sell send it to all of my school, um, people that I know.
Sign or is that, do it on the signs?
That would be helpful.
I'm going to put it wherever.
When we did the one in, uh, did they, it was in July? So it was the one in the summer. I was surprised at how many teachers were here, new teachers that didn't know what their assignments were like in March. And they, there was many, many new teachers that were here picking the books for their classrooms.
They were even teachers who hadn't gotten a job yet. That was what we were getting a lot of. So I don't know where I'm going to be teaching. I just graduated and they were buying. Yeah. So that, that would be nice that they can.
Yeah, so I was thinking summer might be really nice because some of these people had already just gotten their first jobs and they wouldn't know in March that they.
But this would be a good for them to figure it out.
It very, absolutely.
Continue it later.
Yeah.
Um, Adult Services. So we finally have, um, we replaced Austin, uh, with Chelsea.
Yeah.
And, um, so Chelsea is just a dynamo. She's doing a great job. I hope to get her, um, here for the interviews.
Great.
You to her. She's also an author. So we're very excited to have her. She's going to take over the monthly movie and other duties in the adult department. Uh, yeah. Mary Lou, uh, and Emily attended the demo for Library Market, which would be for replacement for our program calendar.
Okay.
We're getting high, we're getting high reviews about Library Market from many other libraries. So excited to
Okay.
See what they have to offer. Um, like I said, the Jackie and Gary singing was just very good. You could hear the, hear the response throughout the library. So that's exciting. Um, Amy's chair still chairing the Hantin Committee and is going to continue for another year. She's just very popular with it. She's quite talented with that contact. Um, and our adult staff are busy finalizing the winter programs and putting winter bingo. And staff, we like to participate in raising arms, uh, as a staff. So we got together and we do this every year. We raised, uh, we're two hundred dollars for the cancer society, specifically breast cancer. Um, and they get to wear jeans on those days.
That was very nice. Good job.
I, I, I did it and I forgot to wear the jeans. Sorry. Oh, well, it's very good.
Yeah.
You wear them by yourself.
Um, Emily applied for a scholarship to attend PLA twenty twenty-four. So crush your fingers and your toes on that one. Uh, and, uh, we hosted an author launch party. I think you heard of this when I talked about it. This is the one we did the video for.
It was excellent. The video was excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, it was, we specifically designed it to be kind of like Oprah-esque. Um, but, um, it, we had over two hundred people. So.
Fabulous.
It went really, really well. Yeah, and team program.
Well, that, yeah, that was the day of, the same day for the Halloween. There was stuff going on here for Halloween. Right, because there's no one here in the morning. The youth, because I did tail wagging tutors and I walked in and thought, what's going on? There is not a kid in the youth department. Usually there's, you know, several by the time I come in at ten thirty. And, um, then when I drove by here later, the parking lot was full. It was great.
Yeah, and programming is increasing. So that's exciting. Uh, in walking the property, which I, I like to do, um, you know, maybe once or twice a month, I'll walk, just kind of walk the property and take a look around. Um, I noticed a tree that had this very strange damage on the trunk about three feet off the ground. Like what is that? Something like that. So we stopped for our retreat, um, being a former city girl, I was like, what? Um, but it was deer huge. So you apparently like to rock there. Themselves on it. And so they came, they were coming out in wait to look at a couple of trees that I'd like to have airspeeded. And so she went ahead and wrapped it for us and said, go ahead and get some wrap and then your landscapers can, you know, grab other trees as needed.
There's a tree that's just on the side of the property that's, is that.
That's ours.
But it's, is it not on our property?
It's on our property, but it's when that whole fiasco happened over the summer.
Uh huh.
That's, that got grown over by.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think when they finish their whole thing, that'll be fixed and.
Because it's like the most beautiful tree on the tree line.
And it was airspeeded last year.
And it's absolutely gorgeous and it was beautiful for fall. And then I'm like, did it get not, put on their pro. Leads all along you.
Because of that, yeah. It's because when they cleared that out, put in.
Okay.
And they broke our sprinklers.
So we don't have to move it. Okay, it's a beautiful tree. So, so that was, that was airspeeded?
Last year.
It really shows.
So I want to get two more trees airspeeded. So I'm working on it. Um, staff anniversaries and, uh, we've been for seventeen years.
Wow, wow. Great job.
And our own Heather has been here four years.
Okay. Oh.
Um, otherwise than that, that's. Any questions on stairs?
No, I'm looking at them. I'm just saying like a friend. One of them.
I always, when I've been asking a question, I go, did you mark me down? I have a reference question.
So the order, what I noticed was the overdrive use was the highest it's ever been. For last, for our covers. If I, if I, you know, did a, did a search on this, uh, uh, you know, just through the PDF, that forty-four seventy-one is the highest we've had.
Yeah.
Since twenty nineteen. So, and the other thing that, there was something else that I really noticed that was, um, maybe it was door count was getting close to what it was like when we, um, we had a few months in twenty twenty-three that we're getting close to what it was like in two thousand nineteen when we first opened.
Yeah. We're getting some noise. Curbside is up as well. Same curbside. No curbside, drive up.
Drive it, drive it. I think that'll be great this one.
Did we start with the crazy?
It was the very last weekend of August.
But we hit, but it's, oh, in twenty.
That's right, yeah.
So twenty twenty, we must, must have started curbside in June.
Yeah. There was a period where we were just, just locked closed.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you done? Moving on to committee reports, when you said.
No, I didn't.
It was a finance.
No, because um, no, because the, the budget's going to be in all business. Strategic planning.
Yes, so, um, this is the marketing that was developed by my great strategy. Um, strategic planning committee took a look at this, um, Rich, if you could, um, just to make sure that your changes were. You know, I was going to go down. There was just a couple of copies that they had, but I wanted you to take a look at it before we launch.
Okay. So, so this, this, this is still can be edited? I'm just wondering if, like Carrie Francis's name is spelled correct. Because she, her full name is Carolyn and I just didn't, for some reason, I thought it was two hours, but I haven't read the rest of it. So I just looked at it and noticed it.
This will be on our website. It will be available to the public.
Can you check that number on Carrie's?
And her first name, yeah. Does, how does she want it down there?
Now that I'm looking at it again, I thought it was just C A R I.
It might be, but I thought it was C A R R I E. And, you know, and her real name is Carolyn.
But I believe when she was going for the board, she signed it as Carrie. She signed her.
Right.
Letter to us as Carrie. So that, I'm thinking that is her preferred.
We just don't want to miss some people's names and I could, and I could be totally wrong.
Yeah, I think we're. The, um.
So if we're actually looking at just brief edits, this is the primary process conducted in the community engagement phase. Um, there's a period, it is a full sentence, but, um, if you're not going to put a period at the end of each bullet, you can't put a period at the end of one. So you have to do one or the other.
Okay, the first bullet?
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
And I didn't notice this before or didn't, but the, on the second, third page, the mission and vision, um, we have the exponent, the the, the, under the board of directors, we have um, the starred items, the then the, uh, the stars are explained under the strategic planning committees for this, strategic plan steering committee. When we.
Strategic plan committee members, boss director, April Stevenson.
Basically moved the, yeah, the uh, the note.
I don't think that's the point of it.
Maybe I'm missing that.
Well, it looks like we're supposed to take these two together.
Yes, that's how I look at it.
And that, that, because that stars on the committee and I think it's just showing that well, here are all the board members. Here are the three that participated in the committee. Do you, I mean.
That's how I read it.
It is kind of confusing.
Yeah, that's, that's what, what, um, what I'm, yeah, I'm saying is that the, the star there.
You know what they could do is make the star left justified and then just make it one line. So it kind of ran under both or center, center, star on it. Instead of being, instead of being justified under this column, you understand what I'm saying? Just move it to be centered on that la, on that last line and then that'll bring your last name up to that whole line to April and it'll, I think, Pedro will be under.
And I were really.
Probably.
Our trustees.
Okay, so center it under God.
Okay.
Under that, that's what I wrote.
I would think it would just be.
We should.
Oh, yeah. And do we need, does the star on the, uh, strategic plan steering committee make sense?
No.
No. Maybe you could get rid of that too. Yeah, they should, that should be gone. But then the other, yeah, that says that.
Yeah, so if we change that to also member of street, yeah. Strategic.
Mm-hmm.
Plan committee.
Couldn't put your name under the.
Yeah, and then, then that would give room to put.
April Stevenson, director. And we're at, instead of.
And yeah, that keeps you out of the footnote.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So repeat that. I'm making notes and I.
So if we strike in the note plus director, April Stevenson, move that note, um, to, over to under the board of directors and maybe say also, um, or member of strategic plan committee. Um, and then, and your name is under, then under the steering committee as a member of the committee there. So it'd be, you know, April Stevenson, common director.
Where do you want her, where, where are you going to put April Stevenson, common director? That's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And so we think this.
So, yes, understanding.
Sixty years from now, come and look at.
Right.
At this, oh, April Stevenson was the director. I was involved in the steering of the strategic plan. Which would make sense. Hopefully would still make sense in fifty years. I don't plan on checking.
Not going to be here.
Keep that, so I, so I understand. Uh, we, we're going to change the little asterisk thing that says strategic committee members to members of the strategic plan.
Committee.
Committee. Okay. And that is going to be center.
I, I would put it then under, now it's shorter.
Yeah.
Um, and I would put it under the um, oh, if it's centered, it would be centered under the.
Better both.
Under, no, put it under the the where.
So confused.
Yeah. I would put it at the left justified under the.
Oh, under just the board.
Under the board, because that's, because there's not, yeah.
Yeah.
And that also then can be a little. Higher, it, you know, it, there's that space.
Yeah, it could be, I got you.
Okay. And then I'm under strategic plan steering committee.
Yes.
Common director. And I really are board of directors, I thought we were board of trustees. Can we just say White Lake Township Library Board?
I think we always say board of trustee.
Board of trustee.
We're not all directors.
No, it would not be good. But I think technically we're board of trustees.
Trustees.
Yeah. It's on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, right there.
Do you want the changes brought back next month?
I would say, say let's.
Or do you want me to send it just to the greeting? That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, but do um, can we approve it?
With changes.
With changes, yes, thank you, Karen.
We approved it in August. Not this, this is this is the marketing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll move to. Approve. The strategic plan.
Marketing.
Marketing. Uh, piece. Uh, as. Corrected. Second it.
All favor.
Aye.
Was there anything to the policy familiar?
No, I'm, we're gonna meet next week, and I thought three or four policies to.
All right. So moving on to new business. Of parliamentary procedures, Karen, and leading this.
I am, I went to the meeting at the community district library.
Oh, very nice.
Back on the second of November, and it was on parliamentary procedure and the open meetings act, and so I provided people with my notes. And I think you're gonna be getting more notes, just, you know, there was a lot, and I'm still kind of going through everything. Um, couple of, most of this is. You can just take it, there was. There was. Hang on, I had something I wanted to, might have been the one that I didn't get on here, do 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 do. Uh-oh. It missed it. So basically, we have our motions. So one of the things, oh, here it is, under four B. So any motion that is lengthy, and they gave the example of ten or more, needs to be in writing, so when you're gonna move money and stuff. You're gonna have to have, you should have that written.
Okay.
Then it's handed to the president, who restates it, and the president hands it to the secretary to type exactly as it's written, so that you don't have a.
Right.
Misconnect between what someone's hearing and what you really wanted said, so any, they said basically. The rule of thumb is, if it's ten words or longer, it should be in writing, so that there's no.
Okay.
Misunderstanding.
And I read that, and because I I read through this, and and I thought that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
There has been times in the past that I knew that we were gonna make some motions, and I did send them to Jake's preliminary, but I need to print them out. Hey, read it, hand it to.
Yeah, so it's read completely, so the.
But do I read it, and then and then?
If you're making the motion.
If I'm making the motion, I read it and give it to um, to Jen.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And then what does Jen do with it?
Well, technically, when we're gonna have to decide how we all want to do this and everything, so technically, according to parliamentary procedure, a motion is made, and then the president restates that before the.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
You know, the mo- the mo- the motion made is blah, 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 all, you know, all in favor say yes, all opposed say no, and then that's the.
I do that after it's been seconded?
Yeah. Yeah, when you're asking for the vote. Um, but you know, a lot of the things don't need that, because they're very clear already, but for something that is a little more. Say.
Sure.
Complicated, say something we had just done, if we had known beforehand what we wanted, we would have those things written down, so that then also April would have them. Exactly as people wanted them, of course, things come up in the middle of the meeting where we're looking at it and realizing.
And we might edit it, right?
Yeah.
Option, right?
Then, um, but the really, really big things had to do with um, the open meetings act. And um, so that's where I, you know, and that could have gone on for another half hour, an hour, it was a two-hour-long thing, it was long enough. The woman was absolutely fabulous, and um. So if you look at down under E. Things the board can and cannot do that would violate the acts, um. If we're sending an email or a text, we cannot send an email or a text to the entire group.
As a group.
As a group.
I thought that was very interesting.
But you can send an email or a text to or call individual people, and just say, hey, at the meeting, I'm planning on bringing this up or whatever. As long as it doesn't go to the group, so that once it's in a group.
Now that it's open.
Yeah, now we're, now we've got a quorum. Um, the other thing is, we can, we can meet up all sorts of places, and we're not a quorum, so if we were all at the tea, um, tree. Lighting, that is fine, if we all met for a dinner thing to celebrate the holidays, that is fine, as long as nothing is discussed that would be considered part of.
And it it considered rendering a decision.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Great, the other thing that I did not know was that we're not, uh, the members of the public aren't required to give their address.
Yeah, that was one of the things that came up that.
I did not know that, because then I think. Well, that's a good, that's a good question, because um. We we really only want people to come here and speak at the library that are white, like taxpayers, right?
You cannot.
You can't do that.
Any member of the public.
Okay.
Any public. Um, and that's what they're trying to, that was the whole purpose of this, is so that all the libraries know, because the people who come to these, they do know the law.
Okay, which I thought was, this was excellent, so um, and so there's no length of.
Yeah, and I'm gonna double check on that, but she was very adamant that you can limit how long.
Like three minutes a person.
Person.
It could go on for hours.
It could, um, so what was brought up was Lepierre has been hit, and there were sixty to a hundred people.
And they all had three minutes.
Well, however many minutes that their. Bylaws said.
Okay.
And when I turned and asked the woman, she said, yeah, we basically opened the meeting. Public comments, and then we had to close the meeting and reschedule, because. It would, yeah, you know, I mean, how long are you gonna keep us here to do the actual business, and you know, so that's a. Yeah, so I ended up, after I went through all my notes, I had some questions, so I am gonna email and. I'll, you know, get back with people on that, but um.
Thank you for attending, Karen.
Yeah, it was real nice, I.
So I have two questions for you this time.
Yes.
This is members of the public are not required to give their address.
That's correct.
We can still ask them for it.
It's a not required.
No.
But they're not.
No, we cannot ask them for it, yes, that is correct.
Really?
Yeah. That's, yeah.
Uh, there isn't something here in the bylaws. Public comments. Shall not exceed one hour total for the meeting, individuals may speak for no more than three minutes, and persons representing a group may speak for no more than ten minutes. When arranged for at least one week in advance, public comment may be scheduled as a special order of business on the agenda, maximum times listed above also apply in this case.
It seems to violate, that seems to violate.
Well, I don't know, I think that we. I think that we would might want to ask the lawyer, because I would think that bylaws had have been approved by our lawyer.
Um.
Do you, you don't think so? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we send, say, something like?
Seventy-five.
Yeah, they're they're pretty.
So the, are these from seventy-five?
These were re- adopted nineteen eighty-six, revised two thousand, two thousand seven, and August twenty-twelve.
Yeah. I know when it was twenty twelve, we didn't, we we it was. It wasn't a big. Change.
It may may not have been.
And it, you know, it did come up that this is something that is in a lot of people's bylaws, and they're wrong, they uh, they violate the open meetings act.
It's twenty twelve, we moved the meeting.
From Wednesdays.
Thursday, the Wednesday, because we had a member that.
Didn't come.
That could never come on on a.
Was it me?
It was, no, it was Liz.
It was Liz.
Yeah, so she was new, and it was like, oh, I can't meet her.
Oh, and she, and 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 we're elected, right, so.
Yeah. I had another question, too.
Sure.
Uh, B to B.
B to. Yeah, so if if you're in a meeting, and the person makes the motion, but they, nobody speaks up, and suddenly somebody else just starts talking and everything. That person actually seconded the motion, you don't have to go back and say, wait a minute, we didn't get a second, the second person who speaks, who is usually the person who says, I second. If that doesn't happen, by default, the second person who spoke was the person who seconded the motion. That's in parliamentary procedure, I've I've become quite a little, what?
Even if they're objecting to it.
It doesn't matter, just second, if you don't have to agree, you just want to get it on the table, so it's.
Actually, actually, you don't, you can make a motion that you don't agree.
Right, that you're correct, yes. It has, making the motion has nothing to do with whether you're voting yes or no. It's, you want the motion, you want to vote on it. And so it's being made forward, and um. Yeah, I've been doing a lot of reading of Robert's Rules of Order.
Good.
Big book.
I'm I I I, it's one of those things that fascinates me, and so I'm sitting down.
So my my question to that is, what if no one says anything?
Well, then we're sitting here, we're all sitting here going.
That's the strategy.
Going, and anybody, anybody, and we're like, you, Jake, you just spoke. It's one of those things, it's more like for the fact that. Business could continue going, and you then you realize nobody had seconded it, and then that just goes back to the person, then somebody goes, oh, yeah, I spoke. And if nobody remembers, then yeah, somebody can just go, I second that, but.
Okay.
It was. Yeah, like I said, it was very fascinating.
Says debate follows the motion, is debate required?
Um, debate is just the discussion and stuff, and with us, we've always discussed and then made a motion, and that is fine, as long as that's what we do, it's okay, but the. Way it's supposed to go is a motion's made, and then, but we discuss and then decide we're not making a motion, so it's sort of. A move point to do it in that order for our type of a government.
Okay.
Thing, this is not, yeah, because there's more to go with it, where each person gets to speak twice, and that's it, so. You. And you can't speak a second time till all of us got our first time, and if we pass, then we passed, and so that's a lot of stuff that has to do with governments that. Have a lot on their agenda and get into arguments, and so they don't get anything finished, that's a.
Unfortunately, we don't have that kind of.
Yeah, so it's, the the, I don't know if I put that in there or not, but it was like, no, that doesn't really. Apply to us, our type of a library board, as opposed to, say, the county, I'm assuming they have to stay a little stricter, because there's so much stuff they're dealing with, and so many people. That's my guess, I don't know. Maybe I should start going to some of the people's meetings.
So then, growing out of this, is.
Would the policy committee do that, or who would handle that?
Probably, I would think.
I could bring the house committee, um, maybe next month, I do have a few I have to get out.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be changed right.
No, it's not a.
Just because we're aware of it, doesn't mean we have to immediately act.
I'll add it to mine.
I just mind sure it doesn't get lost in the river though.
I'll keep it in mind.
Okay.
Oh, don't worry, I have notes, she'll be here.
I think the most critical thing on this is that we we need to talk about that time limit question.
Yes.
Because it should, it will come up at some point, I'm sure.
Yeah. Oh, one of the things, and I don't know if I put it in here, is that all those rules have to be on the back of the agenda waiting, and. If we have public business.
The timeline that's in stuff?
Eh eh, every, the whole how it works, which includes no outbursts and all of that stuff, is on the back.
Can you highlight that?
Yeah.
And then we'll just.
Yeah, so it's that's, so if somebody comes in, and then you read it out loud anyway. They've all got it, it gets read if we were.
If we have a big crowd of people, then we have to, we should be reading it.
Even if we have one person who wishes to speak, it should be read out loud, so that we. Have, that that's our.
Only if they're speaking.
Only if they're speaking.
If they're just attending, they pick it up.
No big deal, nope.
Okay.
Yeah, and so you want to do that every time, not waiting until a big crowd, because then it's, wait a minute, you didn't do this before, so it's.
Okay.
Yeah. So I don't know if I put that on there or not, but that's a.
So then, along with the review of the bylaws, we're gonna wanna look at um, public, one M, public participation at library board meetings, when we get to. But that's where it really was.
I'm thinking Karen needs to join the policy meeting.
You said they were redoing in January or December.
Especially for things like this, Karen needs to participate, because she's the one that's taking the active role to make sure we're doing it right.
Robert's Rules of Order, my husband's like, what are you reading? One of these days, I'm gonna get an answer.
Well, we're flagging it for sure. Because you're gonna educate all of us.
My younger daughter wasn't partly pro, so I was quite a bit into it while she was competing statewide. It's a big speciality.
Performing secretary. Could you add that to the agenda, or do we want to wait till next year?
For the.
The rules on the back.
Let's, yeah, let's. Give it a month, so that we can try and get some things together that are.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and right now, we have the policy, which was ruled on a current held at the meeting, it's just not on the back, it's separate, so we're.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the stuff, and I'm like, oh, and you hear everybody go, huh?
Oh.
And then the people who have had groups would be going, oh, yeah, you definitely want to make sure you do that, we didn't know. Yeah. It was very well attended. People from all over the state were there. And that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
We got to eat in, you know, Frankenman, so my husband was all for, you know.
That was good.
Yeah, it was like, you want to drive me, and he's like, and I go, I'll treat you to lunch if you pay.
Presses your port, will you just tell me remember to do that before we close? I don't have to do it this minute, but I just realized that we're gonna. So let's. Prove a budget.
Yes, yes.
That is the goal for them.
Okay, so um, I would draw, definitely I would draw your attention to, particularly the most uh, information, and the fund balance usage. Which I I did go back and take it down. I brought it down to a hundred and thirty-three thousand. You will sign from there what that a hundred and thirty-three thousand go for. And then you'll see what funds were made, but also draw your attention to. With that, the friend wish list, could you see, and here are where some of the items. I was able to talk to the friends except for, um, and. They really like this friend's wish list, so they're very excited to have this to work from this, and so we were able to transfer some of those over to. To that, um, some I put, you know, maybe, maybe twenty twenty-five, we could go look at it then. And then in other areas, I was able to just lower some of the funds, as I go through and I build funds, um, I certainly tried to. Give it a little extra padding, so I was able to kind of just lower some of that little padding off of there, um, to bring it down by forty-five. Give it a little extra padding, so I was able to kind of just lower some of that little padding off of there um to bring it down by forty-five thousand. So that's really the biggest change was the amount of fund balance usage from the last conversation. So.
Well, and then and you move things that were um. Annual operating expenses out of fund balance. Yeah.
There is a possibility, um we did remove the. The countertop cabinets um from the fund balance usage. Uh and when discussions with finance committee, there is a possibility that if there is some funds left over, we might be able to do that. Um but we'll see how that works. But you will find that um you've got still have the cameras in there, you've got the um. Rob access system, the acoustic tiles. Uh I think the acoustic tiles are very important to have in there, um we have heard from patrons on that and if we're going to. Consider renting that room out, I think it's important.
But we're gonna get more of the quotes, correct?
Yeah, some of this again is just based on uh one quote right now. So again, it's a little padded because I don't know if a second or a third is gonna come in a little higher, lower, but. It just helps us, so some of these are little, may not be that high.
Oh, donor tree.
Oh, I I think I'm just putting it out.
Yeah, you know, it 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 happens, yes.
Yeah, I think the 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 friend's wish list is a great thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and documenting what fund balance usage is very good too.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was a good learning experience for me and really helps me for next year to kind of say. Okay, now I know what to work from and I think the finance committee will just. I might work towards a set number or what if what do we, if we wanna use from fund balance? Now, ensure we'll say a little less here and or is it important to do this and.
And maybe we don't use things in fund balance at all and I mean, in twenty twenty-five, I personally would like to see us um. Investigate to use out of fund balance um a generator. A backup generator for the building. I.
Well.
If we had a week.
To that's, yeah, that's important, but uh so it's first off, let's look at. Working within the the money that we have.
Okay.
That rather than saying we're gonna borrow, we're gonna borrow from the future.
Yeah, you're you're absolutely right. I couldn't say fund balance.
Yeah, so saying like, I, you know, basically you're saying, I, this is what I wanna overspend, let's plan to overspend, so let's plan to. Underspend and contribute to the future.
Totally agree.
And include, you know, priorities.
I think that's a real priority. I I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
We had a week this winter that we didn't have power here, we might not have plumbing.
Yeah.
That's that's my, that's my personal concern. Summer, it's not that. It's, you know, uncomfortable if people, you know, we don't have air, right? Or we or we can't work because we don't have electricity, but. Not to have electricity and heat in the winter.
Yep.
And, yeah. So, so that that's that's how my personal last.
I'll keep my eyes open and I'll talk to other directors to see what. What what have you done? How they have funded.
Okay, let's move on to the uh tip update. I thought we just said. I remember first thing, well, he's with the only changes.
Okay.
I'll move to accept the. Um library budget for twenty twenty-three. Or. Uh as presented.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? Do I have to say that differently?
No, you're fine.
That works.
Yeah, that works.
Try it with the British accent.
Okay, all right, then the five yes votes, Karen. Now we can talk about the tip up to you.
There we go. Oh, yes, there we go.
The the um township doesn't meet till the twenty-eighth, correct?
Yes, in fact, I wanted to, I did wanna pass that, I don't think you for one like me, I did receive from them. Via certified mail, the official public, so that I had seen it, let's say, but they did certify mail it to me. And to you.
So we have sixty days from that, if they make a decision on that date, correct? We have sixty days.
Correct.
To notify them of our decision. Which means we really need a quorum for December's meeting.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. Rich. Eric.
I'll be here.
What's, when's the December theme? Why isn't?
Oh.
It's.
Oh, well, then, yeah, I'll be here.
No, I'm, I was go, I was about to circle that. It's like.
Okay, so I that was my my biggest concern when I looked at this was that we make sure that we um that we have quorum. And make our decisions formal.
Are we gonna make any comments at the meeting? Before I'm planning to participate in the meeting?
Do you do you think you should go?
I don't. I hadn't thought about doing that, I'm just reading the purpose for the meeting. All right, but we're gonna apply, we're just not participating. It's gonna be a lot.
Well, we wouldn't say anything in that meeting if we do attend, right?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Taxpayers and property owners and officials from any affected taxing jurisdiction.
All in all sorts of ways.
What is the point of this being on the bullet, just an update of?
And you you received a separate. Email. That said everything in it, so.
Okay. Then I will consider that closed for now or we're gonna wait until this whole thing resolves itself?
Well, I think, I don't think we can make a decision to vote on what we're we're gonna go after they have their meeting. Yeah, that's why I'm, that's why I said it's important that if they do make a decision in November, their November meet this. Hearing or this, you know, this public hearing that we have quorum in December.
Yeah. We'll be here. Sounds good.
All right, I'll let, if you if you're planning on attending the November twenty-eighth meeting, let me know. I'll know more after that, it'll either be if asked or if it does, then you'll need to decide if you want to.
Rich.
And then if it doesn't, well, that's a whole nother. Yes, I I can't imagine that's going to happen, but uh. Things happen.
Okay.
Yep.
I already worked that evening until close is the only. I have enough time, I can try to come from shit.
Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, oh, yeah, I had a class that just finished last night. So that was Tuesday next quarter. So, um.
Is it at six forty-five?
It's at six o'clock.
I know.
At least that's what it says here.
It's at the township?
It's at the township.
In the Annex Building, you remember the Annex Building.
And we officially titled that over to the township, correct?
We did.
We did, Karen?
We did, that was by. With Glenn.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
That that township meeting is at six in the Annex Building?
That's.
Tuesday the twenty-eighth. All right. So to go back to what I was going to talk about during my presidency, oh. Is that after November, on December first, we will have an open position on board. And we recently went through interviewing, I wanna say at least twelve people. Was it more than that?
I thought it was thirteen.
Thirteen, that's what I was thinking too. Okay, so we recently interviewed thirteen people of which Eric rose to the top. And was selected as our number one choice and we thank you for accepting. So my recommendation is that we just uh at the for first. Place to look would be that group of people.
Absolutely.
Especially since Carrie was such a close second in that position. Um I would like to put, I don't, like, I don't know that I need to put her name forward, but I'd like to guys to all think about it because. We could. You know, we have like forty-five days to fill Jake's spots, is that right?
Once you make a decision, then there's forty-five days to get them sworn in.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, it is.
It's forty-five days from his resignation.
Tonight.
Sworn in.
To get sworn in.
To get the next person sworn in.
Or his effective date of resignation.
Oh, that's right. I forgot it wasn't tonight, yeah.
From November thirty. Yeah, so we have forty-five days, right? So, I mean, if everybody is um. Happy with Karen.
I've never met nor heard from her. I was not part of those interviews because I was.
You have seen her because she's a member of the friends.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, you know, so if you, I mean, I really, I'm not sure how to move that forward if. You feel like you need to talk to her, great. If you wanna abstain from voting or if there's somebody got another idea. On that, let me know, but.
I personally think she'd be an unbelievably s- strong asset to the to the board.
Yeah.
You know, it was really a toss-up between Eric and Carrie and, you know, to have two strong candidates that came forward is. Pretty unusual and I'd like to be able to take advantage of her willingness.
Yeah, I do feel that we already went through this whole process. It's not as if it was very long ago. So I do feel we, that was the. The way we were looking at it was Eric and Carrie and then um. You know, I don't think we should go back and redo the whole process again.
No, I would not recommend that.
Not at all.
It was lengthy and arduous and.
Right, I thought like a good, I thought it was just really evaluating the people.
Absolutely.
Since I wasn't there, Jake and Rich, how do you feel about it? Because I I'm willing to go with the majority. You you despite not having.
I mean, anybody has a reservation or another idea, bring it forth now.
I and and that's in absence of me having any other recommendations or ideas, so I I trust the. Other five people. So I was.
You were smart enough to pick you.
So you gotta realize that that Jen and I were both appointed, so you're you're. Gotta consider the source.
But then you ran.
But they caught me. Oh, that run, yeah, I did that too. No, I I um I agree with what what Jen said that we we had. We had, we had a lot of very good, good candidates. Uh there was a a um embarrassment of riches, I think. Um I know that Carrie had um. Uh complimentary experience with uh with grants uh and with the public facing. And there's and there's no legal obligation to. We're open up interviewing again.
No, there is not.
Okay.
No, we can just appoint someone.
Okay.
Not by laws.
Yeah, do you have anything to add, Jen?
No, I mean. In the by, in the bylaws.
It says we appoint.
We appoint, yes, yeah.
No, I mean, to the board's point, I mean, I don't think we were expecting that many people to come out. In twenty twenty, when we ran, there was five people on the ballot, six spots.
Yeah.
I mean, I remember like.
Yeah.
Rich called me the day before to them on the file, like asking if I was. Like, like, it sometimes, you know, the board's been desperate in the past, so to have a community response, that was awesome.
Oh, yeah.
For sure.
No point in risking that if we got a good thing, we've established connection with a lot of prospective candidates, so.
And I think you you got the most votes out of all, so.
I think it was just cuz I'm.
But hey, you keep saying that.
I feel like I'm taking standardized tests.
Yeah, it was your popularity.
So has anyone discussed this with Carrie then?
I did call Carrie just to see if she'd be interested.
Okay.
But I told her we had to work through the process.
Sure.
And she said, yeah, she would be interested.
And she was on strategic committee.
Yeah. Being appointed one who was second choice and then that person laughed right away and I was pulled in, see, I'm all for that second choice.
I didn't know that, Karen.
I came and they didn't pick me. I went home and I went, they didn't pick me, oh, thank goodness. Like a couple of months later, I get a call and I'm like. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's been good, it's been very good. Okay, so we're, do we need to, do we wanna?
And then just looking at the calendar, if you. What if you wanna make a motion uh to in December, you you would have time. Uh the date to, the forty-five goes to January fourteenth, which is a Sunday, so we. It's almost like the exact same time here as it was last year. Um I'm sure that I could get ahold of Anthony to get something on the calendar the week before that to get for swearing in.
But it we would, it would be nice to have a full board in December when we vote for.
Yeah. Yes.
So, I mean, I mean, Carrie said she would do it if we asked her.
Do we buy any, is there any legality in deciding on something prior to Jake's resignation date?
He submitted his resignation, so it's actually.
So we could make it affect.
Yes.
For a December meeting. Or, you know, December first.
So so you can go.
A short for the policy meeting.
So, yeah, we can make that decision, which would be great because then we don't have a break.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
We could avoid a break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So should someone make a motion to fill the vacant? Or see if it's coming up?
I think since I was the one that wasn't here for the interviews, I'll make the motion and I'd like to make the motion, what's your last name?
Carrie Francis.
I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Carrie Francis to the open position uh vacated by Jake Dudik. Or a port of trustees position.
November thirtieth.
Add to November thirty, December one, December one, effective December one.
Although she can't do it till she's sworn in.
Right.
But we can swear into it. She gets sworn as a word fifteen.
I second that.
Thank you, Erin.
Yes.
So can we vote on that motion?
He would like to discuss.
More discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm all about discussion.
I know.
So.
It's always good though.
Yeah, on this, on December first or on or after December first.
Well, the open position is created on December first, from which point we have forty-five days to fill it.
I just, yeah, but.
Okay, go ahead.
The open position created on December first.
There will, there will be create, there will be the the position that will, that is will be open or something like that there.
What I typed was motion to appoint Carrie Francis to fulfill the vacant position left by Jake Dudik to White Lake County Library Board of Trustees. Effective December one, twenty twenty-three, made by Eric Shawwell.
I'm just wondering about the, what's the effective date mean? I'm just wondering about the, what's the effective date mean, basically?
Well, that's the effective dates that the positions.
It's open.
Then that triggers our forty-five day window.
Okay, that's good, then, I'm okay.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
And she has to be sworn in before she comes to a meeting.
Correct.
Or before she does any voting treaty, trustee.
Right.
And I seconded that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So she'll have a week and a half.
Yeah.
To be to. Do you think Anthony's gonna be able to do that? I don't know, does he, what his calendar's like? Is it usually busy or? No. I don't, does it have to be the clerk?
Yeah.
It just don't. Yes, we didn't have, we didn't get signed in, we did not. We were not, we were sworn in on Zoom and it was not our clerk.
Yeah.
Okay, that might have been a different thing.
It doesn't have to be at a meeting either.
The first time.
No, right, so, right, yeah. Right, so I'm sure.
It does not have to be the clerk.
Is there anything in the bylaws, anything about that, just to be sure? I I know for sure.
Right.
Yeah, Denise was there, you and I were there on Zoom.
We were, we were all, yes.
Start with him.
Yes, and I'm sure it's not like it's something that takes a whole lot of time.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
It was quick.
Alrighty.
About two minutes.
Did we vote?
Well, that's right, cause we all did it because we were all voted on at that moment, that time.
Yeah, no, so we haven't voted.
Okay, so let's vote on appointing Carrie to the open position as of December first.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor.
All in favor, well, you know, I'm confused by the new Roberts rule.
Okay.
So you.
I will contact Carrie. And tell her and tell her that you will be contacting her or not. I still don't know April about the tree lighting, I know on the first week of December, from the fourth to the tenth, I will be at her. So I know I won't be there on the seventh, I'm sure.
All right, so. One more thing, with that, with the board network and opportunities, again, if you can't go, say no.
And do you have any other school thing activities that are coming up?
Uh, no. You know, it's just the other elementary to, have you been on their radar, just for these parents which are conferences and any other. Uh nights.
Didn't you say elementary?
It sounded very British. Different person, just.
I think I saw the sci-fi movie once.
Yeah.
Can I hand me those checks? All right, so I would like, think someone wanna make.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, at.
I'll second that, it is seven fifty-eight.
Seven fifty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we can.